Okay.
All right, team, let's go.
Okay, you ready? Give me the thumbs up then, Pete. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Middlesbrough Town Council Financial Committee today. We're hoping that this won't be the first finance committee to be invaded by dogs or children. Due to the coronavirus COVID-19 restrictions in line, the local authorities and police and crime panels, we have the flexibility to hold our meeting remotely. And this meeting will be broadcast on YouTube and can be viewed at the Middlesbrough Town Council YouTube Tube dot com channel. So we're going to start the meeting with any apologies for absence. So to the town clerk who put his hand up there.
councillor Roberts unavailable today.
Okay, thank you very much. And any declarations of interest? Okay, Chris, so councillor Wilcock.
Yeah. I'd like to declare a non-perpetual interest in agenda item 5.1 St Albans Preschool. There is a potential of I have a personal connection with preschool in the months to come.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Wilcock. And normally at this point, we would adjourn the meeting to invite comments and questions from the public. I'll just ask the clerk now whether there's been any questions or comments there.
Non-submitted.
Okay, thank you very much. So just very quickly, I want to say on behalf of the town council, I think it's important we start this meeting by saying a massive thank you to all the fantastic key workers currently on the front line in Macclesfield, in Cheshire, in fact, across the world, in hospitals, care homes, hospices. In fact, our own former councillor Dom Sexton, who was a surgery nurse, has been fighting Covid. And he's unfortunately had to step down to work on that full time. And I just wanted to thank him for his work within the council. So I just thought I'd start by making that point very clear. If it's okay, we'll carry on to the minutes of the meeting for the 9th of March to approve whether true record of meeting. Okay. Do we need to vote on that one? Okay, so if you approve that, can you put your hands up, please? Okay. Thank you very much. That's, I believe, approved. Okay, and any matters? Pete?
Clarify councillor Wilson abstained as was not at the last meeting.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. Any matters arising from the minutes of that meeting? Okay. So are we okay to go on to 5.1? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so grant application 5.1 St Albans Preschool, a capital build project for £2,000. Would anybody like to speak about this? Councillor Wilson? You hand up first there.
Yes, I would like to speak in support of this proposal for a grant of £2,000 for the St Albans Preschool to build additional facilities and expand the provisions of services. St Albans School takes children from, or preschool takes children from the whole of Macclesfield, providing two to four-year-old early years provision, with 25% of their children coming from deprived parts of Macclesfield. They have done some significant fundraising and also had a large donation paid towards this. And they're asking the town council to make a £2,000 contribution, which I fully support.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Harewood. You had your hand up?
I would just say of the importance, the vital importance of preschool in general, and to St Albans in particular, that they are pursuing this as vital education for the future of our children.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Harewood. Any other points from other councillors? Okay, I would, as a child, like I said, I worked variously in preschool for a very long time. And I see the importance of good equipment and good buildings for the, you know, for young children in our town. I would say, as always at our meeting, that we need to ensure that where possible, what we're funding is both locally sourced and uses local skilled labour and local business. And is also where possible environmentally friendly and using materials that are environmentally sound and encouraging in accordance with our green policies for the town. Has anybody got any other further points they'd like to make on that? The clerk, Pete?
If members are minded to make a decision on this, we'll need a proposal and a second and a vote.
Okay, councillor Wilson?
That we make the donation of £2,000 to St Albans Preschool to assist in building additional facilities to expand services.
Thank you. Can I just get a point from councillor Harewood as well?
I'd like to second it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a proposal on the table there. Should we take that to the vote? Okay, so all in favour of it? Raise your hands to indicate, please. Okay, any against? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you councillor Wilcock. Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to go on to 5.2. So the East Cheshire NHS Trust or Echo, a patient minibus for £2,000. And this was something that was discussed at the last meeting. Okay, have I got any other points from people? Councillor Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wasn't present at the last meeting, so wasn't part of the discussions. But the minutes we've just agreed do show we asked a number of questions, a bit of points of clarification we were looking for. I understand from speaking to the town clerk, we haven't received a response to those. It's possible, of course, that people are very busy at the moment with the current crisis. So in the absence of the questions being answered, I don't think we are able, we are not able to make a decision because we wanted further and better particulars. So I would like to propose with this application that we're obviously very supportive to Echo themselves. But I propose that we should ask them to come back with a new application to include the further information we have required for future meetings and take this item off our agenda for now. We'll wait for an application that answers our questions. My proposal.
Okay, thank you councillor Wilson. Councillor Harewood, hand up.
Would like to have my view, if it's possible, minute that have they pursued the number of minibuses we already have to a view of getting their proposed project within that circle of available minibuses we have, community buses we have at the current. Did not see that as part of one of the things we asked them.
Okay, thank you councillor Harewood. Any other further points from councillors? Yeah, I'd just like to talk about the last meeting where the quest, we asked for a number of questions around who would drive the bus, where the bus would be stored, whether that bus is low emissions or part of the community scheme, and whether that bus would be part of the NHS or charity. These are important questions. And I think that I would echo what councillor Wilson was saying about the fact that that we really need to have those answered before any, we come to any agreement about this point. One thing I would like to say is I've been speaking regularly to the director of East Cheshire Hospice. And I think the work that they're currently doing is fantastic, really on the front line with the current crisis that we are in. I know that in terms of funding that's available at the moment to them, they are waiting for a number of different ways to be funded from central government and are obviously constantly raising a lot of money from charity work. And I would also just like to echo what councillor Harewood was saying about the fact that we do need to, we need to see how this bus would work with other buses and other schemes. And we now have a subcommittee formed that will look at that exact question. So I would suggest, I think, that we look at resubmitting in the future, once they have those answers and obviously when they're less busy. Okay, any other points from people? So, oh, Clark?
Need this proposal seconded before being voted on.
Okay, so we got a proposal from councillor Wilson. Okay, so I'll second that. Okay, all in favour? Okay, and against? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if everybody's alright to move on, item 5.3 Renaissance Event Equipment, £250. Does anyone want to speak about this? Councillor Harewood?
Having heard previous, I'm not sure about that. I think it was positive. I would like to really support this event as most of it is run by people who give their time and effort and expertise to the Renaissance project. And I think this, the equipment is a small amount of money that we can put forward to something in which a lot of people of this town attend. So I am very much in favour of it.
Okay, thank you councillor Harewood. Other points, please? Well, I'd like to say, well, first off, the picture behind me is probably taken from Christchurch itself. So this is the view overlooking the town. But the Renaissance project's been doing very good things to look at ways to keep Christchurch, which is one of our most valuable buildings in the town, to keep it open and keep it working. And they've been finding very innovative ways to work. I think the sum of £250 is a very small one for what they're proposing to talk about. So I would like to, I would like to propose that we agree to that point and wish them well in the future with the development of their ideas. I know that, again, as an organisation, they'll be challenged by the fact that there's restrictions on events. But I think that a lot of the work they're doing, such as gardening around the church and upkeep, is really very good and great to see. So yeah, I'm looking for someone to second that. Thank you councillor Wilcock. Okay, so all in favour of that? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, anyone against? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so item 5.4, the Northern Chamber Orchestra Events Venue Hire for £2,000. Would anyone like to speak about that, please? Councillor Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Last year in July, we gave £2,400 to the Northern Chamber Orchestra, Macclesfield Concert Services. So at the last meeting, I understood you deferred this decision to be considered in the next financial year. And when we agreed the decision to give £2,400, we did agree a service level agreement as a finance committee. And we asked for the Northern Chamber Orchestra to commit the outreach work to schools in Macclesfield, particularly targeting children who fall within the pupil premium requirements. And we also asked them to look for other sponsors as well, because we made a significant donation last year, grant last year. Looking through the application, I see that outreach work has gone on with forging stronger links with King's School in particular. But I have some questions to ask about the outreach work, because I'd like to know whether there's been any engagement with other state schools locally. Polygram High School itself has a big performing arts section. And I know other local secondary schools do the same. So in view of the fact we gave a large donation last year, a grant, sorry, and in view of the current situation where I would, this application to be fair was made in the middle of February before the situation with the current coronavirus crisis developed in the UK. So I would like us to defer a decision on this. And I'd like us to find out a little bit more about where other sponsors have been sought and a little bit more about the evidence of a broader outreach. So I would propose that we do defer that again for further information about the current situation and outreach work and engagement with state schools locally.
Thank you councillor Wilson. Any other points? Councillor Harewood?
To endorse that and probably even want a bit more that when they do that, can they, they have an obligation or ought to have a promise to list the schools they intend to access? And that should come in with the application. They must list those schools, because I don't think there is any school that does not do music. So what schools they may choose, they must list those schools with the applications that they intend to access.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Harewood. So do we have a proposal? Councillor Wilson?
Yes, I propose that we defer a decision on this grant request and that we ask the applicants to return to us with evidence of broader outreach to all local schools, including state schools, with the names of those schools mentioned and what other sponsorship has been sought for the funding of concerts going forward, bearing in mind that we made a £2,400 grant last year.
Okay, so I will second that proposal from councillor Wilson. Shall we take that to the vote? Okay, so all in favour? Okay, anyone against? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. So unanimous? Okay, so on to 5.5 Sparkalot. Allotment sites improvements, £876.35. Very precise. Would anyone like to speak? Councillor Harewood?
And so I want to know if they gave a break, gave a breakdown or you understood a breakdown of how they will do the improvements. Did we have that or did they give that? I'm not aware that they did, but I would like to be advised on what improvements they are actually doing with the allotment.
Okay, I'll just check.
What is it exactly they're doing?
Well, just, I believe it's for planting beds. I'm just looking myself. Pete, would you be able to clarify with that? I'm just, I'm looking. Councillor Wilson? Councillor Wilson or councillor Edwards, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I think it says somewhere in the notes that they're for raised beds, which then be assembled by volunteers.
That's what I saw. I'm afraid my gardening language is quite limited sometimes. So I knew what they were. I just wasn't able to advocate it. Okay, so we seem to have lost Pete for a minute there. And councillor Wilson, or I'm not sure whether you're able to see them. So would anyone like to speak?
Chair, you have given me the details from what you saw and understood. I'm quite happy with those details.
Okay, thank you very much. I think the, I would like to speak and say, well, it's a fantastic allotment. And there's been an awful lot of great work there. For those who don't know, it's adjoining the, it's adjoining the side of South Park. And I was just going to say that the, that the one thing that I did want to check was that the fund wasn't for tree cutting down. Because actually, I've received a number of messages from local people talking about the fact that they don't want to see trees removed from that site. So it's actually good to see that it's for a specific purpose and one which will be very much enjoyed by the community. And the other thing I'd like to say is it's something that people like to walk past. And it really adds to that part of the world, you know, round Maple Avenue and that. So I would like to propose that we approve it. Councillor Harewood?
I'd like to second that, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Just seeing where, just quickly seeing what's happened to the other people. Okay, so I think that, I think the biddles may have been cut off from the internet. So we might, we may have lost Pete for a minute there. Regarding the rules. So I can actually take it to a vote. So everyone in favour of the allotment sites improvements, please raise your hands. Thank you. So that's unanimous from the people here. But we're just going to have to wait for a moment for Fiona and for Pete. Okay, so just quickly, can I check that everyone can hear and is engaging in the meeting? So Fiona, are you there? We'll put your audio on so we can hear you. Just quick.
Yes, I'm here now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and Pete, are you now in the room? Like a seance. Okay, so Pete, are you able to engage in the meeting? Okay, so that's excellent. Okay, so thank you very much. So after, excellent. So after somewhat of a sort of teething problems for our first online meeting, we've now got all the people present. I actually just saw, I saw someone from BT switching off the Virgin internet connection across the road from me. So I think that's probably what it was. Okay, so if we can go to item 6.1, the WAM night shelter, and that's to receive an update from them. So I'd just like to thank WAM for their updates and for their continued work, which is great to see. And so we're just going to get through the items if we can to item 7.1, the audit and the draft annual governance and accountability return. Would anyone like to speak on that one? Councillor Wilson, if you'd like to speak?
Yes, this needs to be moved to go to full council. So I move the recommendation of the annual governance and accountability return, the final version of which we actually received this morning, to go to the next full council.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, should we vote on that then? Okay, all in favour? Okay, councillor? Anyone against? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, I believe that's councillor, Pete?
Can I just check that Ailis is in favour, please? I couldn't see.
Through the other place for it, but we had gone through it in the pre-meeting. So I'm aware of what the agenda suggests.
Okay, so you, how are you voting? Okay, thank you very much. So that's unanimous. Okay. Item 7.2, the interim internal audit. Okay, so we'd like to move that to go to full council for approval. Okay, do I have a second there? Councillor Wilson?
I will move the interim internal audit recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll vote on that, all in favour? Okay. Can I just clarify councillor Harewood, are you in favour or against?
I wasn't told, but I'm in favour. That's fine.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 7.3, the end of year figures. Okay, councillor Wilson?
Yes, I move the end of year figures for recommendation to full council.
Okay, thank you. So I'll second that. Can we, can we take that to a vote? So all in favour? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, finally, 7.4, spend to date, to approve the spend of £203,206.68. And I believe a significant amount of that was going towards the Windmill Street Park development. Okay, councillor Wilson?
Yes, I move recommendation of the spends to go to full council. As you've just said, Chair, a significant amount of that, £100,000, was to refurbish the play area on Windmill Street. And I also want to say, while we're talking about the spend to date, how delighted I was as a council, we approved grants to go to the local providers in each of our wards to support the COVID-19 effort. We gave a £2,000 grant to all of the supporters in our wards. We also gave £2,000 to the East Cheshire Hospice, which you referred to earlier, Chair, in your opening remarks about the need for organisations to have lost their ability to fundraise quite significantly at the moment. So I'm very proud of the work that the town council's doing to support the COVID activities and support for food parcels and hampers and supporting food banks and local organisations who are doing an absolutely brilliant job. And I thank all our local volunteers who are making sure that people who are, who are being shielded and isolating for all the reasons that they would need to do, proud that we're able to support those individuals.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any further statements on that point? Okay. I completely agree with you there councillor Wilson. I think it's been brilliant to see the response from the town council to work with its community charities and organisations to support them when their ability to fundraise is being tested. And then I'd like to sort of thank Helena, Harriet, Jill, Pete, all the staff for working during this time as well. So it's great to see that. Have we voted for that final point? I'm just trying to think. Okay, so if we can take that to the vote then, for the final one, all in favour of the spend to date? Okay, unanimous there. Thank you very much. So members' items. We have none, okay. So the, on to the dates and time and place of the next finance committee, which is 7pm, the 8th of June. Format and venue to be confirmed. So we may have found a new and exciting way to conduct our meetings. This is obviously subject to the COVID-19 restrictions and related regulations. This is obviously subject to the Covid-19 restrictions and related regulations. So I believe that that's the end of the meeting. So just, I'd just like to thank everybody watching at home. I know there are a few people. And I'd like to thank Pete for, for organising our, our meeting tonight and making sure that democracy continues during the lockdown, okay? And I hope that you all stay well and have a very good evening. Okay, so thank you very much then. Okay, and councillor Edwards? Just put it on.
I was just waving goodbye.
Excellent. Okay, so I don't know if this is the way to formally end the meeting, but if we can, should we wave goodbye then and say, say my thanks? Okay, thanks a lot guys.